Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council for Monday, September the 16th, 2019. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The invocation this evening will be given by the Reverend Dr. Steve Smolligan of the Hope Reformed Church. And good evening.
Thank you, council members, for the opportunity and the privilege. Would you pray with me? Almighty God, living where we do, it is easy to marvel at your creation. On so many nights these past months, you have painted a masterpiece into the South Haven sky. This place that is our home gives ready evidence of your creative design and your sovereign presence. Thank you for summer. Thank you for the opportunity to share our home with many and, at the same time, realize the benefit of their presence for our city, our business owners, and we who enjoy the activities their presence invites and encourages. Bless our summer guests who are now back in their residential homes. May our small city have blessed them with good memories and a sense of rest and being restored. As we move into the fall season, we thank you for a bit of reprieve, a chance to catch our breath and enjoy our home for ourselves in a quieter way. Guide our city leaders. Help them to make wise and fair decisions. Help them to weigh the benefits of those decisions across the broad scope of the impact they will have. Help them to think about today but also about tomorrow, and especially a tomorrow they are not likely to see. May future generations be thankful for their far sighted insight, courage, and wisdom. May these proceedings honor you. May words be carefully spoken. May those words be listened to with open ears and hearts. For all the work of tonight's meeting, big and small, we turn to you and invite your presence. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. And before you leave, I told you I was going to ask you, tell us about your summer and the worship on the Riverwalk. How'd that go?
Scott's got our program that wasn't available the last time I was with you. Three wonderful weather nights, the Sunday nights in July, and we estimate a total attendance at the three concerts of 1,150, and that's up about 100 or more than 100 from previous years. So we were delighted by the weather and by the turnout. So thank you once again for your affirming and encouragement in that.
Glad we could help with the weather. Now, I have to ask, because you were very patient. You worked through a process with us because we had some concerns raised. Brian, do we have any concerns raised at all about events this summer?
My office has received no complaints.
Nothing. So again, thank you for doing it and for working through the process to kind of set those events up in a way that kept everybody happy.
It's been good for our church. We feel it's been good for the churches of South Haven. We regularly have other members of other churches say thank you for creating something that calls all of us together for unity and praise. So thanks for asking. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming out and getting us started. If you would now join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next, we are going to do a proclamation for pastor Joe Wilkins. So Joe, if you'd like to come on up. You can come on up, and I'm going to actually have Joe read for Joe. And then when we're done, we'll do a little photo op. And then folks that are here to visit with Joe, if you want to secretly sneak out, you're welcome to sneak out if you do not want to sit for the rest of this meeting. Take it away, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me the honor to read this proclamation to such a good friend and a person that I admire in this community. Whereas Joe Olin Wilkins was born and raised in the city of South Haven and is a 1984 graduate of South Haven Public Schools. Whereas Joe Wilkins is married to Letitia Wilkins and is the father of Cherie and Joe Wilkins. Whereas Joe Wilkins has been employed by Palisades Nuclear Plant for over 28 years. Whereas Joe Wilkins, a valued leader in both community and church, began his ministry as an associate minister under the leadership of the late Bishop Fred Cunningham 30 years ago. Whereas Joe Wilkins is the founder of the Resurrection Life Ministry and has served as senior pastor for over 15 years. Whereas Joe Wilkins managed the Midnight Basketball Program in 2016, which was implemented to engage community members and to provide a healthy weekend recreation alternative. Whereas Joe Wilkins has helped coordinate the distribution of food baskets to needy families in the community at Thanksgiving and Christmas. Whereas Joe Wilkins has been responsible for coordinating the Back to School Community Fun Day in South Haven for the past 20 years, serving between 100 and 125 children each year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of South Haven wishes to recognize Joe Wilkins for his dedication and labor of love as a community leader. Thank you for...
(applause) Now, he wasn't as lucky as the weather. This is our third attempt to do this.
Letitia, you need to get in there. Yes.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. Travis, roll call, please.
Here.
Clark Gruber.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to excuse George Sleeper.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to excuse George Sleeper. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
He is excused. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? See and done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda, items A through J.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas, agenda, items A through J.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? See and done. This is a roll call move.
Campbell.
Yes.
Gruber.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That takes us to old business. The city council will be asked to consider the following motions. First, a motion to introduce an ordinance and to ask the planning commission to consider and provide a report on the possibility of revising the draft zoning ordinance with regard to medical marijuana facilities.
I'll make a motion to introduce an ordinance to ask the planning commission to consider and provide a report on the possibility of revising the draft zoning ordinance with regards to medical marijuana facilities. Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Brian, you want to just remind us again why we're here?
Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, between myself and Nick Kersia, the city's attorney, we'll walk you all through this. Put simply, between myself and city staff, we heard from some of the council a desire to try and open up the marijuana zoning consideration to specifically allow local business to take advantage of medical marijuana testing. We do have a local business who's repeatedly said over the last year that if the zoning permitted it, that they would be providing some of those testing services for firms across southwest Michigan and potentially across the state. The council has taken action to move the recreational consideration to the November ballot, at which time the city's citizens will decide whether or not recreational allowances will occur. The council has indicated that they would take a pause on any, both recreational as well as medical considerations until that November ballot occurs. However, the council, over the last couple of weeks, over the last month, has noted that we do have a local business that is somewhat being penalized because they can't perform these tests and be within the city's adopted zoning. For tonight, the council is being asked to give consideration to a path that would open up the zoning ordinance and specifically allow this local business to provide the testing services for medical marijuana. Now, Nick has worked with us to lay out that path. Nick, will you walk them through the considerations?
Sure. So in terms of procedure, as you know, the planning commission studied all medical and recreational marijuana businesses and put it forward a recommendation to the city council in midsummer before the ballot initiative was brought forward to council. The planning commission's recommendation, as I said, addressed all 11 business types. And at least half of those have now been put on hold by the recreational amendment. So what this, the motions we're asking you tonight, what those would do is they would introduce the planning commission's draft and then immediately ask the planning commission to consider revising its draft so as to only address the one business type, that being the medical marijuana safety facilities. The reason why we have to do that, as the zoning ordinance says, whenever an ordinance comes to the city council and the city council wants to make changes to it, it has to go back to the planning commission just for a report as to those changes. So what you have in your packet, you have the planning commission's original recommendation, and then we have kind of a pared down version of that ordinance that would take out all 10 of the other business types and only include the language that the planning commission has already prepared related to safety testing facilities. And then there's an additional ordinance that just kind of lays out the administrative process for how an applicant would come to the city to apply for the state license and coordinating the city component with the state component. So those are the items in your packet. The steps would be for council to consider the motions that are mentioned in your packet tonight. Then the planning commission could consider this at its October meeting, and then it would come back to this body, to the city council, for final adoption and consideration of the planning commission's report at the October city council meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody from the public like to comment on this? And then why don't we hear from the public and get some council comments? Scott, come on up. Just introduce your name and address.
Sure. I'm Scott Wall. I own New Age Laboratories at 160 Veterans Boulevard. So we are the entity that is, would be the testing facility. I do thank you for considering this. We can't put in our application for licensing until we, as a community, opt in. So we're kind of, you know, hindered at this, or we can't be considered for licensing until we opt in. So I really appreciate the opportunity to do this. There is a lack of testing facilities in the state. Currently, it takes three to four weeks for anybody to get these things turned around. So it's a real opportunity for us to bring in some more jobs here, for bringing in tax revenue into the city. You know, I think that there are opportunities beyond just the safety compliance, but I do appreciate that you're at least considering, you know, what we can already, what we're already doing here and that what we can do is for expanding our business services. The one aspect that I did discuss with Brian that I'd like you to, you know, that might be considered or looked at is the $5,000 annual administration fee. That's nearly as high as what the state's administration fee is. And so that's, you know, that's doubling our costs, given the fact that there's going to be tax revenues that would come in. That would be something that I'd like you to kind of take a look at. But other than that, I appreciate what you guys are doing. So, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks for talking. Anybody else like to speak? If you, I got one, two. I should, Kayle, hold for two.
Jan Haglund, 811 Conger. I just have a question. Approximately, how many jobs will this business create? And also, does that open the door for other like testing labs to come in, or is it for this one specific lab? And does council have to opt into medical marijuana to allow this one lab to have, to be able to operate?
How do you want to take a, I mean, the job creation, I'm assuming, is to be determined. I guess I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
At no point can I speak to the number of jobs that Mr. Wall could create from this. That's a question for Mr. Wall. With regards to the other questions, if this were to be permitted, potentially, we could have other labs who relocate to South Haven and set up shop. That is a potential. And the last question was, do we have to opt into medical marijuana to allow this? Nick?
Yes. So we have to opt into the specific business type. No state marijuana licenses can be issued unless the city adopts an ordinance that allows those.
So if we do an opt in, does that mean that in future, that other types of businesses could also come in?
Not without a subsequent ordinance amendment. This ordinance amendment would only authorize the safety compliance labs, not any of the other four business types under the medical marijuana statute.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Kayle?
I got my question.
Okay. Very good. Anybody else have any questions, comments? All right. Any council comments?
I look forward to seeing it, seeing it go on it.
Yeah. I mean, I feel like we've had this discussion. This is a local business. They're trying to create jobs. Again, we've, it's been approved state and locally, and this is for us, if it's job creation, that is, you know, one of our priorities. So clearly, anything we can do to do that. And this is about testing a substance that is now legal in our state to make sure it's safe. I mean, this is being distributed right now. So he makes sure it's safe. So I'm good with that.
I think they're only allowed to test something that's been approved in the state since 2008.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. All right. So at this point in time, we have a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, no, it is approved. Next, we need a motion to introduce an ordinance to permit authorization of medical marijuana safety compliance facilities in accordance with state law.
I'll make a motion to introduce an ordinance to permit and authorize medical marijuana safety compliance facility in accordance with state law.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. So Brian, is there anything else you need to add, or we've, we covered it? I'm going to, this is just the follow-up to the first.
Right. This is the regulatory part of the zoning component.
Perfect. Anybody else have any other questions on this? All right. In this case, we have a motion and a second to introduce. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, no. It is approved. New business. The city council will be asked to consider approval of special event 2019-25, the South Haven High School Homecoming Parade 2019, to be held this Friday, September 20th, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. along the route described in the map included in the packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event 2019-25 for the South Haven High School Homecoming Parade 2019, to be held on Friday, September 20th, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. along the route described in the map included in the packet.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second, which is good, because I think we're all planning on being there this Friday night. Brian?
So this is the good and the bad report. So the good is, this application had come in two days earlier than last year. The bad is that it didn't give us a lot of time to turn this around. So we will continue to ask the school to try and get these in a little earlier. Now, with that said, the staff at Public Works, at Chez, at the police department have reviewed it. They have no concerns, and we would anticipate a couple hundred people will come out, if not more.
Very good. Thank you for that update. And any public questions or comments on the upcoming homecoming parade this Friday evening? See and done. Any council comments? I'm hearing the floats might be different this year. That's all I'm going to say at that. I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
We stayed for the end of Friday night's game, and they scored.
Yes.
So it was 32 to 6.
I missed that.
And it sounded like the national championship had been won.
So, that's what my kids said. Well, good for them. We got a score. That's good. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve special event 2019-25, the South Haven High School Homecoming Parade 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, no, it is approved. Thank you very much. Next, city council will be asked to consider the following actions related to the finance plan for the Center Street reconstruction project. First, we need a motion to approve Resolution 2019-44, a resolution to authorize issuance of general obligation limited tax bond, Series 2019. And let's just do this second one right with it. Approval of Resolution 2019-45, a resolution to authorize issuance of local development bond, Series 219-A. So Brian, if you want to tell us on both, and then we'll motion them both.
Yeah. So this is truly crossing the finish line. So we've issued debt through the SRF. That's the State Revolving Fund. We have the backing of the Local Water Sewer Authority to assist with the underground work. We have the backing of the Downtown Development Authority to cover the above-ground work. And tonight, these are the last two components before the construction will start in days. This is for the, essentially, the general obligation debt. We'll be issuing that through Sturgis Bank, just a couple of blocks from here. And then we'll be taking the last step to issue the debt through the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, the DWRF. So with that said, we've talked a lot about the cascading effect, going and getting grants to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation through the United States Department of Ag, getting loan forgiveness through the MDEQ, and then taking this final step to use a local bank to cover the remaining funds for the construction. If the council approves these last two resolutions, you'll see Kayla out there in the next couple of days getting started.
No pressure.
I'll make a motion then to approve Resolution 2019-44 and 2019-45.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any public discussion about the reconstruction of Center Street? Any council discussion? Looking forward to it. We met with several business owners. Tailgate talks will ensue. Just remember, folks, the businesses are still open, so go downtown and shop, shop, shop. Our shop owners are waiting for us to show up, the locals. So get down and shop local. They need us down there. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolutions 2019-44, 2019-45. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, no. It is approved. Go to work. Next, city council will be asked to consider a motion to introduce an amendment to the city's adopted electric utility rate ordinance as presented. So, well, we want to give a motion, then I'll let Brian tell us what we're doing.
I'll make a motion to introduce an amendment to the city's adopted electric utility rate ordinance as presented.
I'll second.
All right. Motion and a second. Brian, tell us what we're doing.
Yeah. So Bill's going to approach and assist on this, but put simply, back in 2008, Public Act 295 was signed into law under Governor Whitmer. The intent at that time was to encourage just greater energy optimization, so EO, energy optimization. And at that time, the EO programs became a mandate. Any electric provider is required to have an EO program. The idea is to provide economic incentives to get people to improve the efficiencies of their buildings through upgrades to lighting, heating, cooling, et cetera. So the EO program has been something that has been on the books since 2008. The EO program is one that does cost money. We contract with an organization called MECA. MECA provides administration services and can actually issue rebates to local companies. Even South Haven High School would be an example of someone that's received a rebate. Now, with that said, the last time the EO program came before council, the council adopted the ordinance to fund the EO program in compliance with state law. We have to have it. As a result, you've got to be able to pay for it. At that time, the logic was there was a chance that the EO could be phased out or amended. As a result, they placed a sunset on the ordinance with, at that time, the assumption that the EO program would be phased out. We believe that there was also a Scribner's error, that the ordinance was intended to be in effect until 2019, but in looking at our records, it says 2018. As a result, we're bringing it back before council, asking for two things. Number one, that we reapprove the EO program or the funding for the EO program. And two, that we end that sunset clause. We are now in our third governor. It appears that the EO program is here to stay. Now, Bill, that was kind of a long-winded intro. Is there something that you'd like to add?
You covered everything. Some of you might wonder, actually, how much does this cost the actual resident? Average resident uses about 600 kilowatts per month. You're looking at about 97 cents per month. That's what we're talking about here.
Yeah.
It is something that's used for everybody. For example, when I first moved here, I got new appliances. I didn't really know about the program. Larry Halberstet came up to me and said, you know you can get rebates on this. And it was very, MECA does a very good job. You submit it, and the money comes back to you. It's a very good, and incentivizes us, the residents, to buy energy-efficient appliances. And what that does is actually approves us not to have, whatever they take off, the grid is what we don't have to put into the grid to upgrade our system. So it is a very good program.
To follow up on that statement, the cost per kilowatt hour is .001612. So this is a relatively low-cost program, and it is something that we are required by law to provide the EO program. It's not something that you can opt into or opt out of.
Right. And we've been doing it. It's not a change. This is more of a cleanup. Now, the money is out there. We mentioned MECA. How are we with, I mean, I think, just communicating in general that it, I don't, at first, we had some roshers. We had some stuff out. I don't know if we could put it out in the waves again, just as a reminder, and just if it's an obvious link on the website or something to just clue people in to go look for it.
Yes, we do have a web on the, I'm sorry, a link on the website. You are correct, but we probably haven't been advertising it as much as we should be.
Okay. And we've been into several businesses that have taken advantage of this, I will say. I mean, they said, hey, we've got, you know, pretty substantial rebates to upgrade their lighting and, as a result, saving money, which means, you know, more light line.
In the last 30 days, I've had two different organizations, or one resident and another organization ask, and we were able to get them information within probably an hour of the request, just saying, yeah, here's how you can take advantage of it. And it works in some cases. In others, it might not be the best program. But as we have local businesses doing major remodels, it is a program we push. I can tell you that with the remodel of the high school, we were actively pushing the program, just saying, hey, if you swap out your lights, going to like an LED-style light, there's potentially a significant rebate that we can offer. So it's out there. We will continue to push it.
Very good. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any public questions on this one? Comments? Anymore?
businesses doing major remodels, it is a program we push. I can tell you that with the remodel of the high school, we were actively pushing the program, just saying, "Hey, if you swap out your lights, going to like an LED-style light, there's potentially a significant rebate that we can offer." So, it's out there. We will continue to push it.
Very good. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any public questions on this one? Comments? Anymore? Oh, come on up. State your name and address.
Okay, Vika Anderson, 457 La Grange. My question is, if you don't have a computer, and you can't get access to a computer, how do you get the information?
We do have some brochures, actually, at the DPW site, and probably, I didn't check out here, but I'll have to check out here and see what they have on.
I think that.
Maybe we could just put a little reminder in the waves again sometime. That's easy to do.
There's that, too. Yes, thank you.
That we can do. All right, so no other questions, comments? Thanks for that question. So, we have a motion and a second to, motion, sorry, introduce an amendment to the city's adopted electric utility rate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is introduced. Next, we have citizens in the audience who will be heard on items not on the agenda. And if you have any items, you'll come on up, state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes to throw something out. Come on up.
Sandy McComb, 04933, Cecilia Drive, Apartment 501. I was regrettably unable to attend last Monday night's meeting about affordable housing. Mr. Reeser was kind enough to provide minutes of that meeting to me, so I can see what went on. I'm here tonight because I want to know what the next step is in creating some affordable housing here in this area, and is there anything in place right now for that next step? I'd really like to be involved as a citizen, and I know there's a great need, myself included, and I'd like to be really on the forefront of making that happen. So, thank you.
Thanks for coming. It was a very good meeting. Sorry you missed it. You want to just share the next steps?
So, members of council, members of the public, yes, there will be additional meetings coming. The Housing Next is under contract with the City of South Haven, with South Haven Charter Township, and the South Haven Housing Commission. The intent is to host a variety of sessions where everything from local zoning is looked at, to trying to market the South Haven community, to the Home Builders Association, and other volume builders. But the main purpose is to take a look at that six acres of property that the city's local development finance authority owns, and to see if we can develop a plan that is acceptable to the city, to the citizens, and potentially form a partnership between the city council and potentially the South Haven Housing Commission. We will be hosting another session later this fall. That date has yet to be determined. As soon as we have the date, we will post it here. We'll send notice to the newspaper. We'll send notice to the radio station. At the last session, we actually had both News 8 and News 3 also provided coverage.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Oh, I got a couple, so.
Danielle Vinstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. Follow-up question, then, on the six acres. I understand that there was a citizens group put together at one point in time that perhaps came up with a plan. Is this, yes, no? Is this just rumor?
No, it's not rumor. It's part of the adopted city master plan. There was two proposals that were built into the master plan. The city council has been, has formally met with the planning commission, formalized and adopted that master plan. You can find it on the city's website. You can find copies here. As you look towards the back of the plan, there's two different visions that were laid out by local citizens. We provided a charrette process where we invited all of the city, but specifically sent invitations to residents living with, I think, within 500 feet of the site. The intent now is to try and take those two visions and put pen to paper on, can we put together a financing plan to make that work? And the financing plan is really what we're talking about, is how do you leverage the debt? Who is the proper authority to hold that debt? How do you manage it to ensure, long-term, that it stays out of the short-term rental pool, that it stays either market or, quote-unquote, affordable? And then finally, how do you determine what is truly affordable? So, there's a lot of big questions there, but that's why we're working with an outside organization that specializes in answering those questions.
Okay, I just was concerned that a lot of time on citizens' parts had been put into a plan, and would hate for that to have somehow been lost in the shuffle. So, I appreciate that, Brian. Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of time from citizens went into it. A lot of expense from citizens went into it. And one of the first conversations we had with the consultant was, "Here's a copy of the master plan. Here's exactly what was drawn up. Can you take this idea and make it work, and specifically, what is the best way to finance this? And is it through general obligation debt? Is it through the use of the Housing Commission's ability to tap HUD funds? Is it a nonprofit to be created?" Those are the questions that have to be answered.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
No problems. You can go.
And Mayor, if I could add, I think that's page 116, 117 of the master plan. That's on the city website.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, who else? Vika, that's Idris, and Kalen. I got a couple, so.
Another question, not for me, but did you hire Cal Patrick? Kirk Patrick, whatever his last name is. I'm sorry.
Yeah, as I stated just a minute ago, we're sharing the contract expense between the City of South Haven, South Haven Charter Township, and South Haven Housing Commission.
Okay. My question is, actually, it's more a comment. Being here at the beginning of the meeting and having a prayer, that's fine, but, you know, there are people in this town who are not Christians. There are people in this town who are Jews, Baptist, but not Baptist, Buddhists, you know, other, all kinds of people. If you're going to do a prayer, can we make it ecumenical, please?
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, come on up.
Hi, I'm Cindy Krupp, 5 Chippewa, South Haven, and I have some handouts for you guys, too. I'm speaking on not bringing recreational marijuana here into our city. On August 30th, I was in a car accident, and I was hit by an impaired driver. I was a passenger. My husband was the driver. We were on our way home from Chicago, and it happened on 196, right after we got off in 94. My life will forever be changed by this woman who made a decision to drink while she was driving. I have a steel plate in my neck now. It's trying to hold my neck together so it can heal. I broke my neck in the accident. I was perfectly fine before this. So, one of my biggest fears has always been, you know, you don't know what the person next to you did an hour ago, whether they've been drinking, whether they've been driving. There are laws in place right now for drinking and driving. You can test a person to know whether they're legally drunk behind the wheel. She was drinking while she was driving. She did not test over the legal limits. She didn't go to jail. They let her go. She wasn't tested for drugs. So, the fact sheet that I've given to all of you guys to look at is from Smart Approach to Marijuana, and it does just give you facts with references here on what they are finding that marijuana can do. Most people, I would think, that use medical marijuana are not out driving on the roads. They have a medical reason for using the marijuana, recreational. There's nothing stopping them from being out on the road. Driving while high is a growing problem in the U.S. Estimates show that a third of impaired driver, driving incidences can be traced to marijuana, while many more involve combinations of multiple substances. And I don't need to read this whole thing. I think it's really important. You guys asked for education. This is not the kind of education I wanted to give anyone. It has always been my fear, and unfortunately, it came to fruition. In the state of Michigan, we chose, as voters, to make it legal. We have to deal with that. But in the City of South Haven, and you guys each have a vote, everyone that's watching this on TV, closed caption, everyone that's in the audience, has a vote. I think it's really important to think really hard on what we are going to allow into our city, because this could be you. I could be dead, truly, or not be able to use my arms and legs. I am so lucky, and I am blessed, but had I made the decision to move after the accident and not wait for help to come, I wouldn't be walking. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. And heal up. Gail, come on up.
Hello, Gail Patterson Gladney, and I'm your county commissioner. I just have some news from the county. I wanted to let you know about the Child Care Fund, and approval was given by the commissioners for the Child Care Fund budget for 2019, 2020, and the budget total is $2,014,897.73. The funds fund several areas of childcare while the children are under the jurisdiction of the court. Fifty percent of the eligible costs will be reimbursed by the state of Michigan. Okay, also, economic development. The commissioners approved a three-year contract with Market Van Buren to provide economic development services, management of the revolving loan fund, and working collaboratively with local governmental units. And the contract for the first year is $125,000. The second year, $127,500, and the third year, $130,050. Van Buren County Transit Grants. Commissioners accepted two grants from the Michigan Department of Transportation to be used for bus purchases, and one grant was approximately $144,000, and the other approximately $121,000. Road Patrol Grant. We approved the grant request for almost $77,000 for the secondary road patrol and traffic accident prevention program. I wanted to mention that I was able to go to a program called Generation High, and it talks about the impact of today's marijuana culture on our youth. I was there with probation officers, counselors. I think one of our principals of the local schools was there, many professionals, and elected, some elected officials, talking about the impact of today's marijuana culture on our youth. I learned quite a lot, more than I had ever imagined, that's out there, that our youth will be facing, even no matter what we vote as a city. But they emphasize more accessibility leads to more use by our youth. And they said, "You can't stop what you don't know." So, I appreciate that you all are making yourself aware of all the different aspects of the marijuana culture, what's going to be coming to Michigan. And they were saying, too, back in my day, in college, back in 1967, what the strength of the marijuana was about 3%. I don't see. Scott Wall, but. And now, 80 to 90% of the T.
HC.
Yes, okay. And it's a whole different strength, and it's also a lot of mixtures of different other drugs that are in the marijuana, mixed with the marijuana. So, I do think that's important to see about testing, and I'm glad that you're checking on the testing. One of the things, too, that, and the county, we're looking forward to the 2020 Census, which is so important. There's 50 ways the census data can be used. I won't read all 50, but I will tell you a couple of those. Decision-making, decision-making at all levels of government will use these census figures, drawing federal, state, and local legislative districts. That's important, if you have an accurate count, attracting new businesses to state and local areas, distribution of over $675 billion annually in federal funds, and even more in state funds, and forecasting future transportation needs for all segments of the population, and plus 45 more. But I just wanted to let you know that the census is very important, and as city council representatives, if you can encourage all your residents to make sure that they are aware of what's going on with the census and answer the questions. I will give this to Brian to pass out to you. It's, the 2020 Census, an important way to support your community. And then the last item is, some of, some of you know about the Van Buren United Civic Organization in Colbert, and Annalisa Cox is an author who's spoken before in South Haven and other areas. She's going to be at the civic organization October 12th, 1 to 4. And the book that she's written, one of her first books, was A Stronger Kinship. The local library has that book, and talks about the history of Colbert. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Gail.
No?
Tina, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Rachel Sankofsky, 251 Hubbard Street, South Haven. I just wanted to say thanks so much to Gail for attending the program the other day. It was entitled Generation High. I saw our educators there, Latonya Gil and Listy Smith. It was great to see them there as well. The presenter was fantastic. Officer Jerome Galloway is his name, and I just wanted to pass on a reference for you. His website is tallcopsaysstop.com. I would encourage that you go to that website, tallcopsaysstop.com. He's huge. He's a tall cop. And one thing that he did say, and I'm just going to reiterate, is he clearly said, and evidence is also suggesting, that more availability equals more use, period. So, I just wanted to pass that along. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Don, come on up.
I'm Don Bemis, 740 Phillips Street. I am speaking for concerned citizens of South Haven. We're kind of kicking off our campaign to approve Proposal 2019-1, which would prohibit recreational marijuana establishments in South Haven. You're all quite familiar with that. I understand the audio on the TV's not working too well, so I guess I'm mostly trying to encourage seven votes from up here, and whoever else can hear.
Everyone that is streaming can hear it just fine. I've received a complaint that the Comcast audio is not good. I've responded during this meeting to the complaining party that, please, just click on the streaming service. It's a free service, and the audio quality is excellent, as is the HD camera.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for the correction. There are a couple of things that our campaign is not. It's not about medical marijuana. We're not allowed to discuss medical marijuana under the law that does recreational marijuana. It's covered by an entirely different law, so this has no impact on whatever the city does with medical marijuana. And it also has nothing to do with the right of adults in Michigan to use recreational marijuana that is allowed by law, so we're not trying to change that. The focuses of our campaign are going to be for the safety and the health of our community, our youth, and our future. Now, the community includes the ambiance of the community. What sort of community will South Haven be? I'll put a little aside in. I have relatives in Colorado and in Washington. Their legalization of marijuana did not improve the ambiance of their communities. The environment, and that goes for chemical environment and every other part of the community and. environment, how the community is. And another item to look at on this is, let's do some study of what we're finding from other areas. One thing that we are finding out is that the legalized marijuana, recreational marijuana, has not been delivering as advertised across the country. Cost-benefit analysis is definitely advised. One of the costs that is not looked into and that we've heard this alluded to tonight is the costs of an impaired public. Medical costs, accidents, increased hospital costs, many of which wind up being absorbed by the communities. Another one is the revenues not coming in as expected, partly because it tends to be a cash business. So, you are dependent upon the reporting. Another factor is black market is still there. It's competition to the legitimate recreational market and will continue to be because there's always somebody who wants to make a little bit more money and have a little better profit margin. I won't say too much about our youth. I think we've had some really good points brought up tonight, except to point out that brains continue to develop into the early twenties. So, if anything alters the brain's environment, it can alter the brain. The studies are still coming in on that. And finally, our future. Mistakes made usually cannot be unmade. We've seen that in South Haven with regard to many factors having nothing to do with marijuana, whether it be the sorts of things that we permit in the town, whether it be zoning, whatever. If something is, if a mistake is made, you're stuck with it. And this is such a new industry, we're still learning. It's changing a lot. The marijuana is stronger. The medical studies are not coming out too well on the new strong marijuana. We need to be very careful about leaping into it and expecting to make a lot of money and have success in South Haven from this. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. All right, is there anybody else? All right, seeing none. Next, Police Chief's Monthly Report. Good to have you back.
Yes.
Chief, good evening.
It's very good to be back, so thank you. I have an update on some community outreach. Actually, this is last month in August. The police department helped sponsor the 20th Annual Back-to-School Picnic at Elkenberg Park with Pastor Wilkins and Life Resurrection Ministries. Few other related issues, but ultimately, the Wednesday that we finally had it, I heard it was a success, so. And just on that topic, we are going to continue that event every year. So, if anyone's worried that it's going to change, Pastor Wilkins has offered to help a new team organize that, so we're going to continue what he started. Next, had some K-9 news. Both of our K-9 units, Officer Van Brussels and Mersman, conducted some demonstrations at a back-to-school event hosted by the Bangor Police Department and also paid a visit to the Ward 1 picnic at Elkenberg Park in August. Most recently, our K-9 units, both of them were on duty, assisted Ottawa and Alleghan County with an incident that resulted in the apprehension and arrest of four individuals responsible for about eight separate mobile phone store robberies. It was a pretty big operation. I believe they were all out of the Chicago area. In our area, though, all four suspects were apprehended, thanks to the K-9s. In our area, they had posed a significant danger to our community, but luckily, they're all now in jail and facing numerous felony charges, so our dogs did a good job. Finally, I have an update. We have an opening in the police department. We've begun a hiring process to replace Officer Tony Bailey. He left us to go work for the Grand Rapids Police Department, is where he is from, closer to home. So, we currently, actually, we are down to six applicants by the time I wrote this. So, we have applicants we're looking at right now as potential candidates. The good news is, it's a small pool, but we've got some really bright individuals. We've got a mixture of experience, a couple right out of the academy, but so far, I think we'll have some good applicants. So, we're doing backgrounds on those candidates right now. We'll have a final interview and then make our selection. So, hopefully, within a month, we'll be introducing a new hire. And also, in our information center, we did some restructuring and we were able to create somewhat new position. We had to move some schedules and hours around, but we have a new addition, Megan Blodgett started, and she has replaced Stephanie Schrader, who left earlier this year, to go back to school. So, she's off to a great start. She's training right now on days and afternoons, but we're just happy that we found her because that was a difficult spot to fill, so she's doing very well.
Questions, comments? Good to have you back and thanks for keeping me safe, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you. City manager comments, Mr. Dusset.
If you haven't seen, the South Haven Area Emergency Services Executive Director has announced that he will be stepping down. Now, the nice thing about this is he's given us a year's notice, so we are in no way happy to see him go, but we are very happy, as part of the SHAZES Board, that he's made his decision and he's given us lots of notice. We will be trying to mimic the police chief search process. That process from start to finish was approximately nine months long, and the intent is to find the very best replacement for Chief Wise, so that we ensure that SHAZES just celebrated its 25th year, and we hope to be hiring a chief that'll spend at least the next 10 years with us. Chief Wise has been extremely helpful in helping us lay out the process, but he's also been very candid about the fact that he does not want to be part of that process. He wants the SHAZES organization to go into it knowing that he's got strengths and weaknesses and that he does not want to interfere with the process. So, step one is setting up a hiring committee. Step two is getting that committee together to begin working on the job posting and essentially the interview process. Because myself and the mayor, both members of the SHAZES Board, we won't be part of that committee. We will be part of the SHAZES Board when the finalists are brought to us for consideration. So, I am completely happy to answer any questions from members of the public, if there are questions. We are going to be mimicking the police chief search process, so as we weed through the various applicants, we will be opening up the door, hosting a variety of public input sessions from members of the public that want to come and meet the applicants and just observe as those interviews occur. And the last thing I would just stress is Chief Wise has been the only chief that I've dealt with since becoming city manager, and I'm extremely happy for him, but I'm also sad to see him go. That's item one. Item two is, speaking of a chief, I'm absolutely thrilled to have Natalie Thompson back. She has been gone dealing with some personal issues and we are thrilled as city hall staff to have the chief back working with us and I hope that she is able to take leave on just fun stuff in the future, but absolutely thrilled to have her back. Those are my comments.
Very good, thank you. Questions, all right? Council comments, I'll start on the right tonight. Mr. Reeser.
This whole issue of marijuana is such a difficult one, and I have tried and tried to do as much research as I can, and I'm very appreciative for all the people who've sent me information, that people have stood up. I'm actually glad that the people are going to get the vote on marijuana. I'm just, I feel sad that it's all five rolled into one instead of each one being voted on individually, but that's another issue. But here's the part I find a little bit frustrating. I read this yesterday, and this is AARP, which I respect the organization, and it talks about medical marijuana. And Gail's right, and everyone else who has said it, that, and I know my friend Joe Wilkins, who was honored tonight, has told me many times, but I had to really see it in print from a legitimate organization like AARP, that the marijuana today legitimately being produced, licensed, is not the marijuana I grew up as a kid hearing about. And it is much, much stronger. And the unfortunate part, because it is illegal federally, which Don always reminds us, that doctors are not as involved in medical marijuana as we would think. So, this article, AARP, says that many seniors, while they're being helped by medical marijuana, in fact, aren't getting the guidance and the help in picking the right ones, and they're going to bed or getting up and taking marijuana, which makes their pain go away, their arthritis, whatever. But hours later, they're still having impact from it stronger than they ever expected. So, it's not that clear-cut on this whole issue about the strength. The other part in this article that surprised me is, because it is illegal federally, we don't have universities, hospitals, and the medical field doing the research that needs to be done on it. Now, I'm not trying to push anyone voting anyway, I'm just saying, these are some of the facts that are coming out, that we just don't have all the information we need. And so, it just makes this whole issue a little harder for all of us to try to decide on medical marijuana as well as recreational. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
No comment.
No comment today.
I'll just make a comment regarding the housing first and moving forward on that. I think it's very important as we move forward into that program and the future meetings, that we really make sure that the public is aware of the difference between what affordable housing means and what market-rate housing will bear. And I think it's really important, for myself anyway, and the way I'm looking at it, I think it's important to have a block or an area or whatever the case may be, special zoning district, whatever the case, for affordable housing. Market-rate housing means what the market will bear. In other words, what somebody's willing to pay for it and affordability are two different things, and I'd like to keep stressing that difference. That's all I have tonight.
I would like to say, the first thing I would like to say is, I'm so glad to see the chief and glad to see she's in good spirits, and it's just wonderful to see her beautiful smile on tonight. Soon as I looked up and saw her, I got so excited. I know that's kind of personal, but I just want to let you know that I appreciate you. Second, I wanted to say congratulations to this wonderful man who just so happens to be my husband for 22 years. He's done a wonderful, wonderful job here in the city of South Haven, and I just appreciate that the city appreciated him for all his hard work. And, because a lot of times, people feel like their work is unnoticed, but I'm glad that the city noticed what he was doing. And another thing I wanted to say is I really appreciated the testimony, I don't remember her name, of the lady that came up who had the accident, and how she talked about the effect that she, how she was affected by an impaired driver. And I just want to assure everyone in this community that, as a city councilwoman and as a part of this community, and I'm sure that all the councilmen would, see that I am the only woman up here, but all the councilmen, I'm sure they all would agree that we want to continue to make South Haven, or keep South Haven, a healthy and a safe place for everyone, and that we all do matter, regardless, everyone's different opinions. We all do matter. And I know we may not always agree with, you know, everyone, but I think that we can agree to disagree, and I think that we can come to a common ground. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so Natalie, welcome back. Great to have you here. Joe, congratulations, you still back? Back row, Joe's still there, good. Well deserved. Chief Wise, I thought he couldn't quit. Isn't he one of those three or four people that wasn't allowed to quit?
Thanks, Troy.
Had to check into that. We had a ribbon cutting for the Great Lake-to-Lake Route 1 from South Haven to Port Huron on Friday. So, that just connects the first of what is going to be, I think, five when we're all done, so lake-to-lake. I think they're, they still riding? So, there's a group riding across the state. Clark, how far did you two go?
Brian and I decided that we would go to a place for bananas and Mountain Dew in Kalamazoo and then turn them to come home.
Nice, good, good plan. Did you make it?
So, I think it was about 77 miles, round trip.
Nice, good work. I tried to go to the Three Blondes and back, and that route wasn't approved on the route, so that was good, so. All right, very good. So, that was that, and again, I just did one on the affordable housing discussion, and I hope people realize this is early. And there are a lot of different terms. There's affordable housing, there's market rate, and hey, we even have workforce housing, because there is, there's this kind of a squeeze in between. I got people making, you know, 50 grand a year, where do they fit in this mix? I can't tell you the number of people that said to me, "You got a whole lot of quote-unquote 'affordable' housing out there, and I don't fit into that bucket. I need a house too, and I work." So, we got to remember, there's, so there's going to be a lot of work to be done, and so I hope people come, listen, participate, you know, come with ideas and solutions and know that we by no means have all the answers. We're going to listen and we're going to try to, you know, poke at this problem. So, we're here to listen and we're here to take care of it. So, on that note, I think we're ready to go. How about a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.